Everybody ready to get started? It looks like it's six o'clock. I'm going to call the Ojai City Council and Ojai Planning Commission joint meeting for January 12, 2016, to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Blatts?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Chair Foster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Merck?
Here.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Here.
Commissioner Lajowski?
Here.
Commissioner Zabilla?
Here.
Commissioner Nicklin is absent.
Okay. And if Chair Foster could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to be here with the Planning Commission. It's always close to my heart, having been on it for ten years. Welcome to people in the public that are here. Welcome. We're gonna -- we're not going to have any public comment on any non-agendized items tonight. We will have public comment on the agendized item, but not on the agendized item. We'll take up any of the public comment at the regular city council meeting that starts at seven. So we have a workshop to go through tonight in discussion of community development priorities. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and chair members. I think it's -- oh, there we go. Thank you, Mayor and council members, and chair and planning commission members. You may wonder why we've called you all together once again after meeting together so many times. And I think the theme of this particular meeting is to help me achieve my New Year's resolution, and I need your help to do that. So my New Year's resolution is to be more focused and more strategic. So as a little bit of background, this last year that we just finished, 2015, was by far the busiest year we've ever had on record. The number of building permits and the value of building permits that were issued was double what it had been the prior year, and pretty much double what many of the years had been before that. The number of staff reports that we did for the council and the commissions was double what we had done in prior years. And we also adopted a lot of new processes that take time but really didn't add staff to do that. So we have our tribal consultation process. We have a new process that we use for director's exemptions, and a number of other things that we're doing now that take a lot of time and effort. And I think one of the themes that we've talked about a whole lot over time is that we think we're a lot more effective when we focus on a few high priorities at a time, finish those, and then move on to the next set of priorities. So I'm hoping through the discussion today that we can get some input from you, and the council can get some input from the planning commission, as to what you think the most important things are to be doing in the next six months or the next year. But I'm not asking for more work. I'm really asking for less work and more focus. I did find it interesting, when I put together this list, we started out by listing things that weren't done or that had been suggested and haven't even been started, but we added on to the front of that all the stuff that we completed in 2015, which is kind of the first set of bullets on the bottom of your memo. And I don't know if you're impressed, but I'm impressed by how much we actually accomplished, because a lot of times during the course of the year, it seemed like we were spinning our wheels, or we were kind of regurgitating the same thing over and over. But at the end of the day, I think really quite a bit got done. And I'd like to thank Mayor Laura. He's sort of led the effort last year to focus us on a certain set of priorities and a certain set of deadlines. And in spite of it being kind of messy and somewhat controversial, I think largely we got done what we had set out to do. So hopefully, with your input now, at a future council meeting, the council can talk about goals for the coming year, and we can do the same thing in this coming year. So with that, it's really a free-for-all. We've listed things that are either in progress or have been suggested as future priorities, and the exercise is just to hear your thoughts on that.
Chair Foster? Why don't you -- why don't you either discuss what you -- how you want to conduct it through the planning commission, or go around the planning commission so that we can hear the individual members' comments?
Thank you, Mayor Blatts. Well, I think typically what we do is just go around the horn on this and get opinions, if any, from the planning commissioners, and usually discussion evolves from there. So Kathy, would you like to have anything you'd like to add to this?
Sure. I went through, of course, the lists that we completed, and the currently in process, and then the proposed projects. And, you know, I know some of these things have come to planning commission, and I see where they may take a priority. But there were a couple of semi-items on here that I know have pretty much specifically come to city council. And I guess on those, my question would be to the city council members, how much of a priority do you think those are? For instance, like the leaf blower ordinance, that never came to us, but maybe it's a top priority, I'm not sure. But I will, I'll just kind of briefly go through the ones, the things that we've been reviewing to some degree in the planning commission, and I'll mention those, that I think this is the currently in process list, and that I would, I think we should continue to work on them. Let me just, I wrote so many notes, I got a sore amount right now. Well, first of all, the neighborhood planning, I feel like that needs to definitely keep moving forward, and that some of these other categories still fall under that. For instance, like the hedges, the walls, the fences could, to some degree, get handled in that, so I think those are kind of dovetailed. We're working on the second unit ordinance, which has been really exciting, and I know that we're going to continue that very soon, so I think that should keep moving forward. I'm interested also in amending the allowed uses in the M1 zone. I think having that M1 zone is important, and we only have one location in town for that, so I want to make sure we keep it. But at the same time, if there's vacant space, I think that that's something we should look at. I'm actually going to be working with Ms. Wohl tomorrow on the handouts for the State Water Efficient Landscaping Guidelines, which I think is important. Another one is the tree trimming ordinance. I definitely feel like that's a top priority on that list. And then to the proposed future projects, the sustainability-related development standards, I know Mac's working on that, but I think that's a top priority. The sites of merit, I believe that probably is historic preservation. Fire safety, fire safe community, I had a question on that. I know we've got the fire safe council. I know we have some fire code, things that are in our building code. So I wasn't sure exactly what that was, and I'm not sure if somebody could explain what that is.
Can you explain that?
My understanding is that that's implied, is whether we should have some special local code aspects dealing with the fact that we're surrounded by a national forest, and whether or not the fire safe people, council might have some suggestions for how we handle certain building code issues that are not addressed in the state code with respect to the fire vulnerabilities we have because of our particular topography.
Okay. And I do know that the new updated State Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance, this time around, does include some fire safety, and that's, of course, in landscape, but of course, you know, all houses and properties are surrounded by landscape, so there's some information there, but okay. And then, of course, the next one kind of dovetails with that, and then there's the walls and hedges. I think that still ties in with the neighborhood planning. I also think continuing to update and add forms is really important. I think that takes some of the ambiguity away at the counter and also for the applicant. We often have people coming to planning commission stating they're confused, they didn't know what they needed to do. So if this provides clarity, I think that's an important thing to do. Well, I'll pass it on. I don't need to go through each item, because we've got quite a few commissioners here.
You're doing a very good job, Kathy.
That was nice.
Yeah, just go ahead, because you're really covering a lot of bases that... If you have more, we're willing to listen.
All right, well, I'm just down to the end. And there was a couple of things I glossed over, but let's see, where did I leave off? All right, so the hedges, walls and fences, of course, I think that ties in with the neighborhood planning. Can I, I'm just going to put this out for a plug to the public. We just had a workshop on Saturday, it was fabulous, and I just encourage anyone who's here tonight or who happens to be watching to please show up to the next workshop, because this is your chance to come in and talk about your neighborhood and what's working for you. And it may be, you know, your walls, hedges, fences, and other things, but this is, I think, a golden opportunity for everyone to take advantage of. Update temporary use permits. It sounds like that may be something staff could respond to. I wasn't sure exactly what that was being referred to.
So it's been identified quite some time ago that our temporary use permit really doesn't address the types of temporary uses that people are trying to do in Ojai. It's mostly for nonprofit, and mostly addresses the issue, the stereotypical ones you would have seen years ago, like pumpkin patches, Christmas trees. Doesn't really address pop-up type uses that people like to do in Ojai. So the thought was, or the direction was, you know, as time permits, you know, let's really update it so that we're not always telling people no.
Okay. So that would possibly come to planning commission, we'd have a discussion?
It would come to planning commission.
Okay.
And ultimately to city council.
Right. So, yeah, I would think that would be a priority, because I know we periodically do have people coming in to planning commission with questions about that. Update the code compliance manual. And then I'm not sure, with building services, request for a proposal, what would that be?
So we have a contract with Stewart Consulting to provide building services and building inspection, and we had talked about a common practice for cities is to periodically put contract services out to bid, just to make sure we're getting a good price and a good level of service. So there, that had been one of the council goals, but the council decided to hold back pending the city gate audit and then make a decision on it.
I think I'm good for the moment.
Commissioner Merk, would you like to?
Kathy's much more comprehensive about this than I think anybody else is going to be, but I guess I was curious about what we're going to do to address the vacant buildings on Ojai Avenue. Are we going to?
Well, currently, there's, as you may have heard in the papers and so forth, the council is working with a law firm that specializes in code enforcement to address a couple of the most significant vacant buildings that are out there. All the others would be dealt with through our vacant building ordinance, which has been passed, but it's still, there's still a process at the staff level that goes on to shepherd all the vacant buildings in through that process.
Good. Thanks. I notice we have amend allowed uses in the M1 zone. I actually had a discussion at the community planning workshop on Saturday with some residents of the Persimmon Hill who were saying they would like to do exactly that, so I think this is a good, good thing to focus on. Not quite sure what we hope to accomplish with the historic study of the Chaparral School and City Hall.
And the whole section there, we have three or four. Yeah, I should, we decided to list everything that's on the plate, not just the things that are on the planning commission's plate, partly to illustrate that there are all these other things out there.
And I look forward to updating the code compliance manual. I think anything we can do to make it easier for the public to get things through the city is a good thing to do.
Commissioner Zabilla?
So when I saw this, when I printed it out, first my printer jammed, which I thought was a sign, that this is too long of a list. I wanted to just go like this. No, no, cut in half. A lot of these things, some of these things that are completed are still ongoing, correct? And I just don't know how this small of a department can really adequately meet the needs of the applicants, which to me are the number-one priority, the people who are coming to the counter every day and trying to get projects done. How can we really serve the community? To me, that's got to be, I don't know, to me, that's the number-one priority. And there are people who are not only trying to get things through, but they're trying to get things clarified. I'm working with somebody right now. I ran into councilmember Wirick and councilmember Clapp and councilmember Haney. And, you know, we can have all the checklists in the world, but at the end of the day, we need face time with the development director to really sit down with the plans that we have and make a determination whether or not somebody can do something with their property. So the property that they want to buy. And that has really far-reaching implications if we can't get those people face time. And if the development director and, you know, other people are so involved with all of these many priorities, I just, I don't know how one person or a small department can handle it. So that's, my plea is to, let's focus on five things in addition to the day-to-day operations of the department, and see if we can't streamline it.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes. Kathleen, I'd like to hear your response to Rosalie on what you think of this priority list should be, and whether or not you think, and of course, Rob, too, do you think this is overly ambitious, this list here of items?
I think that even to try and do all of the things that are currently in progress is probably overly ambitious, in that we really need to cull the list and focus on the ones that are most important first.
Okay. Then with that said, it looks like we're going to be getting the transient rental ordinance before us soon. Is that correct? I saw that on your agenda tonight. Is it on there tonight? And I'd like to know what we're going to do with it. One of the issues that comes up is whether or not there'll be any areas in Ojai that will allow them. So we're going to be redoing the VMU or the M1, and maybe looking at the VMU as a possible place to allow vacation rentals? Is that something that?
You're asking us to give you a conclusion, we haven't delivered.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so...
Nice try.
Good, all right.
Maybe I could just make one comment on that. For legal reasons, when you amend the zoning code, an amendment to the zoning code has to go to the planning commission. So the situation we're in right now is that the council's trying to make at least the big-picture decisions on what they want to do, and then it would go to you on an advisory basis and then back to them. And there, we'll see how things go tonight, I guess.
Got it. Okay. So there's some work to be done on there. So there's a few things that dovetail, yeah, dovetail with that. The transient rental certainly dovetails with the updating of the second unit ordinance. Many people are concerned that, you know, if we allow and more lenient abilities to build second dwellings, that, you know, people will turn them into vacation rentals. So that issue needs to be dealt with. And that's also dovetailed into the neighborhood planning, which I thought was a great workshop this weekend as well. It looks like those, if there was any priority, I would see that those would be the main priority items, and they're all interrelated, those three. And then you can throw in the leaf blower and the hedge height and those nuisance ones that need to be dealt with, but I don't think are as comprehensive as those other issues. So that's my opinion.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with council. It's always good. And again, you know, in looking back over this list, I think back to something councilmember Wirick said a year or two ago, just about how the challenge of this time in Ojai is how we survive our own success. And I think, you know, with everything, and as Mr. Clark said, all the projects and how busy a year it's been, there has been quite a few accomplishments. And I do think that, you know, we should all be proud, and it's been no small part on staff's time and diligence to complete this stuff, so I really thank Kathleen and Rob and Steve and everybody, you know, behind closed doors and doing these things. In the review of things, I think one of the big things that's come up over the year has been a, I don't know, a tendency for other commissions to kind of be flexing their wherewithal. I'm not really quite sure what the exact terms are, but I think it has to do with all of these things going on. I think there's some, there is oftentimes a sense of confusion as far as where boundaries stop and where responsibilities begin. So if I'm just kind of going through this, I know the Historic Preservation Commission has been very active in the past year, and as has the Building Appeals Board. Both have, you know, done quite a bit of work, and I think that there should be more interaction and more delineation between the commissions. Just seeing this Historic Preservation Ordinance, I think the planning commission should take a look at it. I think that there should be more, perhaps, checks and balances before these things get sent up to city council. That's one thing I'd like to see. As far as future projects, before we adopt the 2016 building code and local amendments, I'd really like to take a look at sustainability-related standards in the city, before we just blanket accept these things. I hope that we can get that on the agenda. That's one of my personal things. I hope we continue doing everything that Chester and John and Kathleen have talked about so far, and try to focus on what we can accomplish and just keep doing the best that we can to make the city work as well as we can.
Because that leaves me. It was a busy year. 2015 was very busy, and we covered a lot of territory. I think one of my concerns is, is actually the amount of work that we're looking at. We have to remember that on top of this, we actually deal with individual design reviews, and these things are very important and very time-consuming, not only for the commission but also for staff. So the more of these that we put on staff's plate or that come our way, the less time there often is to give proper attention to those projects coming forth over the counter from developers or contractors and this sort of thing. It seems that the timing is taking inordinately long, and this is what I'm hearing from various developers time and time again. So it's not a blame game, I don't think. I think it's a matter of focus. Where do we want to put our focus? So I agree with Commissioner Zabilla. We've got to be very careful on how many of these things we put on staff's plate and on the planning commission's plate as well. So that's the overview, and maybe, I agree, for me, neighborhood planning has always been number one, because it's within neighborhood planning that we can approach a lot of these smaller issues that come up continually before us, that take a lot of time, that need to be more defined, more focused. So unfortunately, I was sick over the weekend and wasn't able to attend that, but I have in the past, and I find them very beneficial, and I'm looking forward to see how this thing shapes up the fruit of the labor and the time that's been put in by the city and by our consultants, so. Individually, looking at the items, I've circled the continue to update and add the forms, and I know that there's some updating going on on these applications that come across the counter, but we have never really formally looked at them. I don't think they've ever come before the planning commission, and I think that was the point of putting it on this list last year, was to give us the ability to understand what the applicants are actually going through when they enter this process, and what are they seeing from their end. So just to give us the ability to stay a little more in touch with the other side of things here. And I think that's really important when it comes to understanding and interpreting and trying to substantiate our decisions. I continue to think that that is a priority. The last thing that I get a lot of feedback from is also that, Julie will appreciate this, is the tribal consultation process. I think a lot of headway was made last year. I think it all pretty much came upon last year, the formula of this policy. There still seems to be questions that come up and that where clarification is needed between the city, between the tribes, and obviously that impacts where we're at, and not only to mention those people that are actually having projects going through the city, trying to get clarity. So it's a process, and you have it down as a process. So I think it was under the completed priorities, and it's far from being completed, I think, at this point. So the conversation continues, and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, everyone. Councilwoman Clapp?
First of all, I'd like to go have Mr. Clark tell me of the council priorities 2015, what of those aren't completed?
So the updating of the forms is an ongoing project, and I was very happy to see that we have now developed a new set of application instructions, which, is that online now?
I believe so.
Okay. So it was suggested that we follow the format that Ventura has, because it's kind of a checklist, you know, if you're applying for this, then you need this, 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 and this. And that was a pretty big step forward, but there's quite a long list of forms that are in the process of being updated, and I'd be glad to share the list with everybody.
So it's still in process?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else on there that's still in process?
Well, the website, again, is an ongoing activity.
Yeah, boy, yeah.
The planning activity report's an ongoing activity.
Okay.
So the neighborhood planning workshops, the goal was to complete the second one, which we did, but there's still more to do.
Okay. And has the Water Efficient Landscaping Guideline been adopted?
So the short answer is yes. The more detailed answer is that we chose to allow the state, the new state guidelines going to effect by operation of law.
Right. Okay, I guess my question here, I'm trying to figure out, of the 2015, how many man-hours are still, or woman-hours are still required to complete the items that haven't been completed?
It's really hard to tell. For example, another one that isn't quite completed is the tribal consultation process. We put it in place, and we've been doing it, but we still need to kind of sit back, sit down with the cultural resources committee and go through it, and it's very hard for me to predict how long these things are going to take. It really...
Yeah, I understand. Okay. I counted the number of items that were done in 2015, and some of them still aren't completed, and there were 15 items. And I felt through the year that it was an overly ambitious attempt to complete this many items in a year, and I think it was to the detriment of efficiency and accuracy with staff, and I think it was overburdensome. I think sometimes ambition can get in the way of common sense, and I think we kind of got overextended with that. That being said, we have something, some from 2015 that are going to roll over in 2016. In 2016, there's an additional item, so now we have 16 items in 2016 on the list. I'm not one to like to add on more jobs until what I've taken on or completed. I think that that's very demoralizing and inefficient. So just... So just focusing on the current in process, I think there's some things here that really aren't on a burning necessity. We have vacant buildings, and yeah, they've been there a long time, but I think there's other things right now that should be addressed first. I don't think of them as high priorities. The highest priorities I see are getting the transient rental regulations taken care of, finish the neighborhood planning process, because the neighborhood planning process is part and parcel to the second dwelling unit ordinance, the transient rentals, the height ordinance, the height limits, and sustainability. I agree with MAC that sustainability is something that we should take more seriously and should somehow start integrating into our everyday policies. Every time we bring something forward, I think it should be one of the things that we address within all of our discussions, how does this fit into a sustainability practice? The tree trimming ordinances, my impression is it's all but done, and I think that should be taken care of because trees are being over-trimmed, thus stressed, which has made them less able to endure the drought, so we've had a lot of die-off because they've been over-pruned. So that really needs to be taken care of, and that's all part of sustainability. And the other matters, to me, I think we should put behind the transient regulations, neighborhood planning, and the tree trimming ordinance. I think that's...
Thank you.
And because leaf blow ordinance is already in the works, I think that needs to be taken care of first before we move on to anything else.
All right, Savaro?
Thank you, Mayor Blatts. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for coming tonight. I appreciate it. We keep referring back to 2015. I thought that was normal. I was just trying to get a hang of what it's like to be a mayor, so. I look, I appreciate the list, Rob, and I appreciate you wanting to come and consolidate the list because I do feel we got a lot done in 2015 for many reasons. I felt that, for example, Councilmember Clapp and Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick took on the vacation rental, so that opened up a little bit, and we were able to really clarify where the council wanted to go, so that broke it down. Saying that, I have a really hard time looking at this list and prioritizing because there's different items that take different amount of time. For example, again, vacation rentals or the ad hoc committee, or the cultural resource ad hoc committee, that takes more time, more thought process, and we're coming down the pipeline, and Councilmember Haney and I are working on certain items so that we could recommend to the council to get clarification before staff really starts doing the bulk of the work. Now, there's some work that has already been done by staff, but it's just a different type of workload. I look at this list, and for example, we go down the leaf blow ordinance, that's already been done, that just needs to be introduced to the council. We look at the neighborhood planning, that's the consulting group that's really steerheading that project. And if I remember correctly, on our RFP, when we hired them, is that, yes, we would provide legwork, but the bulk of the report is being done by them. So in a sense, I don't know how much staff time that's really taking. I'm unclear on some of these items, the timeline. That's what's missing for me before I could really prioritize. What I did tonight was I really listened to commissioners and see where your concerns were, and a lot of the concerns was the community development process and implementation, review and implementation. I think the City Gate process is going to tell us a lot about what that's going to entail and what they're going to suggest to us. So again, a lot of these things, I know it seems like it's a lot, but I think if it's organized in a certain way, we could visualize how everything's coming down. I guess that's just the way my mind works and the way I try to visualize everything. And I concur with Commissioners Zabilla with the fact that we need to clarify this department, so we are working on it. We're developing these guidelines that we've been doing for a while. I remember when I first got on council, we were trying to work on these forms. They're coming to fruition, I think. They're still in the process. The website's always going to be an ongoing thing. We want some of these items to be a livable document. So of course, they're always going to be an ongoing process, so we're not doing our job. So I think that folk, getting a timeline, for me, and maybe a council meeting of what it entails, would help me as a council member to prioritize, but I do want to listen to our fellow commissioners to make sure that I, that as a council, as a council member, I also implement some of the things that you want to work on, the sustainability. It's really important. I agree with Councilmember Clapp. So I'm afraid to say this takes certain present, or priority, because some of it's already been done, some of it has not. To me, I have to visualize. I have to see where it goes on the calendar. And I commend staff. They've done a great job this last year trying to work with us. I know there's still some clarity. I think that we need to explain better to the commissions of where the boundaries begin and stop. I think that's a really good valid point that Commissioner Legowski made. So that's also, I mean, I could go on my other previous list, and I could name so many more items that we don't have on this list. I mean, I'm looking at it right now, and there's a total of 31 on my list, and then some of them, so I'm hesitant to prioritize right now, but I just want to take commission's feedback and take it back to a council meeting before I make my decision on what I want to prioritize.
Thank you. Councilman Haney, and let's see if the three of us can keep our comments to about five minutes or less, so that that'll leave about 10 minutes for public comment if we have any.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mine are going to be pretty simple. You know, I manage on a process by giving my guys more work than they can do in eight hours, so that we are in a continuous motion of moving forward. So I personally look at this list, and it doesn't overwhelm me. I don't think it's anything we can't do. It's just a matter of doing it. So I think our role is to help you to prioritize it and hopefully give you enough staff and enough support, and let's move forward on it. I don't, I'm not overwhelmed by this. I don't think there's anything here that we can't do. I think we'll come back and prioritize a little bit down the road, but it's a great list. It's good to see what we've done, what we need to do, and where we're going.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick?
That's a high standard there. Two minutes. I'll probably be a little bit more. Couple of comments. One, I think, and I think Councilperson Laura already alluded to this, we need to be smart about how we group things. And for example, the City Gate process review and implementation, I'm looking forward to that, and that touches on so many other things. It touches on the, ultimately, it could touch on the update of the code compliance manual, the forms, the ongoing issue with the developed and updating numerous forms, the planning activity report. A lot of the processes are being looked at by this group, I think. At least, that's what their charge is. And so I think that out of that one line of City Gate process review and implementation, there's a lot of other things that are grouped into that that I hope we can approach as a group. And I think to answer Councilman Haney's point and respond to that, that makes it a lot more tractable. If you look at things that are related as a group that naturally relate to one another. Another example, sustainability-related development standards, fire-safe community, the other issues. We're, you know, I think we all got a communication recently that the state legislature has mandated a general plan update by 2017, having to do with what amounts to be, what amounts to sustainability. And we have a mandate to do that. Well, let's wrap the approach to, that we want to take to that general plan update. I know it sounds so far away, 2017, but for a general plan update? No, it's not. And especially if it involves some specific things that we want to do anyway, try to put, you know, put a approach together where we can wrap some things into that process that would include things like sustainability directly related. Fire-safe community can be directly related to that. So I think that's how we need to help us approach this thing and this whole challenge. And two other comments is, Commissioner Nolan, I want to make sure we don't overlook the multimodal circulation master plan. Is that explicitly part of the neighborhood plan or not? And I just want to make sure we don't overlook that because that's important when it comes to, you know, issues of how we specify street design, how we handle a lot of things, and we don't want to forget that.
Right, and we shouldn't forget it. And actually, it is, so basically, everything we're doing in complete streets, which has to do with this multimodal...
Right.
...master plan, is what happens in the neighborhoods in the public right-of-way.
Right.
And then things like setbacks, wall height...
Traffic calming, speed limits, I mean...
Right, that's on the public right-of-way, and then everything else, which would be like building height, solar access, hedge height, those are on the private property. So we, yes.
And I'm just saying that in terms of currently in process, that is something that we're going to hopefully get to this year, is to adopting that plan.
Yes.
And I just want to, I think it should be explicitly listed.
Yeah. I will say that we've gone through the first draft...
Right, I don't want to get into detail about it, I just...
But, and they are going to be presenting it in March at the next Neighborhood Planning Workshop, so.
All right, and then I want to wind up, want to wind up really quick here. And I think another point that Councilperson Haney made is that it, to the extent that council can help, especially when policy goals are being spread across different commissions, if we can achieve maybe some guidelines at the council level, rather than, you know, there's a balance between top-down and bottom-up, is what I'm trying to say. And if the council, you know, has certain policy goals that we can come together on, that can help guide a more efficient deliberation by the commissions. I think we need to look more explicitly at, and the historic commission recommendation might be a good example of that. That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Clapp?
I have a quick question for the Planning Director. Kathleen, what is your take on this list? Is this something that with the current staff you feel is achievable in 2016?
No, not with current staff, no.
Not with current staff?
Because I think, I think it's, and like the city manager prefaced his remarks with, that we've seen so much increase in applicant-sponsored projects, and we're getting, I mean, it's kind of a push-pull. We're getting a lot of public criticism regarding our customer service, but we can't, we can't really, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know how many people are going to walk into the door, submit applications. We don't know how much hand-holding they need when they come in. And so when we have these, when we have priorities that are conflicting, you know, we are telling, I mean, that's been the direction, tell the applicants it takes longer. And that's what you're hearing from the chair, is that's an issue. And I think that's really where it's, there's two paths that are conflicting, is we've had an increase in building permits, an increase in code compliance issues, an increase in planning with the same staff with all these new priorities, and something's got to give, and either we have more staff, but as you know, we've been having trouble getting staff. So, you know, it's kind of, no, we can't sustain this kind of work hours, man-hours. It's just not there. So I think that's what the city manager was trying to point out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me tell you my take on it. And I, I'm not looking at the list, and I'm not looking at the priority on the list. I think all these things are good things, and how they happen to come out of the chute, they're going to come out. But I look at things quite a bit differently than maybe some. I look at it as a city, we have some things that we have to do. And one of the things we have to do is we have to process building permits, we have to do inspections as construction goes along, we have to do code enforcement, and that's some of the more important things that comes out of the Community Development Department. And as far as I'm concerned, we have to concentrate on doing that really, really well. And we need to be able to do that really, really well before we do anything else. And if it takes just that to do it well, well, then maybe we're not going to be able to do anything else. But we've got to learn, and we have to put into process, how we can do the things that we do for our community really, really well with the staff levels that we have. Same thing with the, same thing with the Planning Commission and all of our commissions. You have building plans to review, you've got design review things, you have public hearings. All those things take time, and to throw things at you that take more priority over the things that we have to do is not right, even though we know they're on a list and we know we've got to get to them. But we have certain things that we have to do well, and sometimes I feel, particularly when we look at a list that we have here now, that we're more interested in quantity than we are quality. And I don't think we should finish, we should start anything new before we have finished something and finished it well. And one of the things that the council's going to hear about is that I'm going to begin having the council receive a monthly report on all the things that we have sent the staff to do, and I don't want anything to be put in front of any of those projects without the council expressly saying, we're going to put something in front of something we've already sent to staff. Because if we don't do that, we end up with a whole hodgepodge of things, and nothing gets done, and nothing gets done well. We've got to concentrate on quality of the work product rather than the quantity of the work product. I don't want anything going on, whether it be the Planning Commission or any other commission, that city council hasn't expressly told them to do. They're working at our direction, and we don't want them spending staff time and doing other things on their own time, with their own commission time, without us saying, okay, we feel that that's a priority enough that we're going to put, we're going to say, we're going to give you the time and the effort and the staff time, and even maybe the legal time, to do what you're asking to do. Sometimes I get the impression that sometimes things come back to us from commissions, and we're not even sure where it started, and I don't, I don't think that's the right way to do it. So I agree that all these things, you know, we need to have a wish list. Things like the leaf blower ordinance is important, but how important really is it? Is it more important than really quality processing of building permits? I don't think so. I think building permits, having a, somebody come into City Hall and say, you know, that was a real pleasant experience to get this building permit, is far more important than our leaf blowing ordinance. I just, that's the way I feel about it. Sure, we want to do that, and there's all kinds of things on this list that we want to do, you know? The not having to do necessarily with the Planning Commission, but Chaparral School, Phase One study, okay. Well, great, we're going to spend time and effort to do that, and we budgeted money for that, but what are we going to do with it afterwards? I mean, what if they, they find that there's a significant historic aspect of it in the Phase One? All right? Has council said, okay, well, then we're going to proceed to the next step? No, we haven't said that. So I feel like sometimes we're spinning our wheels trying to get all kinds of things done without really concentrating our efforts on doing what we have to do really well and focusing on a smaller number of projects that we don't move on to the next one until we're done with this one and we're done with it in a way that we're proud of. That's my thought process. Now, I'd like to open up to, we only have 10 minutes, so we do have two speakers' cards. The first one is Reno Rolle.
That's me.
Okay, come on up, come on over here.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Blatts. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, the board, city staff, of course, our members of the community. My name is Reno Rolle. I'm here with my wife, Lynn. We live at 537 Del Oro Drive. We've been here for 13 years. Very happy to be in Ojai. This is just a matter of public communication. I thought you might find it of interest. We have a superfood company called Boku. Some of you may have seen our van buzzing around town. We have our products at the Ojai Valley Inn. It's a business that my wife and I started from our home. Back in 2005, we began, we launched in 2007. We're now very happy to be feeding people in 65 countries our certified organic kosher and vegan superfoods that we source from all over the world. We office in Ventura. We have our own FDA-approved facility that we are rapidly outgrowing. So we've recently launched on television a network called Evine, and we've grown about five times in the past 11 months, meaning 5X our annual revenue. And so we are looking to move our facilities. We've dreamt since inception about possibly being located here in Ojai, where the business was born. And we've had our sites, believe it or not, on the bowling alley. So I just thought I should let everyone know that we are very interested. We now finally, thank goodness, we've been blessed with substantial growth, and we have the resources to make a move. Now, I've heard... Now, I've heard all the controversy, all the sort of convoluted nonsense, or, sorry, not nonsense, but issues surrounding the bowling alley, and we just wanted to make everyone aware that this is sort of something that's developed very recently, as we've grown to the point where now we can actually seriously consider our dream of moving Boku to Ojai. And just to let you know, there is, our business is so incredibly gentle and safe and friendly to the environment, we're incredibly also sensitive to the environment and the community especially. There's no construction. It's gently, freshly harvested, gently dried and powdered organic fruits and vegetables that are simply packaged, and we very rarely have any big truck traffic. There's no loud noise. These are, it's like, think of a kitchen, so to speak, but no heat, no cooking, no processing of any kind, certainly no toxic chemicals. We test everything, both in-house and using third-party facilities. So, our dream would be to put a deal together and actually buy that building and put something there that's beautiful and that ticks all the boxes, you know, both from everyone in this room standpoint, the community standpoint, create something beautiful that we're all really proud of, and that makes sense. So, we visited the property today, and, you know, it's a bit daunting, because it's old, and it smells nasty, and there's a lot of spider webs and stuff like that, but I'm not really afraid of it, you know? I think it would certainly cost some money, and we'd have to do some work and be very open-minded, which we are. We're not rigid, we're not set with anything in particular. We'd want to do something that everyone would bless and be very happy and proud about. So, I know it's recent news. I saw it in the newspaper, and I actually had to gulp a little when I saw that the plan was to put a campground on the avenue, and someone who loves our town as much as we do, I just, I think there's probably a higher use, and I think an organic superfood company with people like Lynn and I, who are such great stewards of the planet and love this town so much, would be just that. So, I just thought I'd share it with everyone, let you guys know
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Lynn Rolle?
Well, he said I would do that.
Okay. Those are the only two speakers' cards I had. Does anyone else in the audience want to talk about priorities? No? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the planning commission and the council. Any further comments by council members?
Mayor Blatz, I had a question. I understand we're going to elect a mayor this year, and I'm just wondering how that's going to change any of the structures of these various commissions we have and so on. You guys have any thoughts on that?
I don't believe it's going to change the structures of the commissions at all. The only thing that I know about it is that November of 2016, the city will elect a mayor for a two-year term, and it's going to be, in essence, the same position it is now. It's just going to be an elected position by the public rather than elected by the council. Anything else, Mr. Clark?
No, I really appreciate the feedback. It's very helpful.
Ms. Wald? All right, well, thank, yes?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. It's kind of a reflex on what Councilman Wyrick was saying. Before you spoke, I found myself initializing the different topics, you know, putting historic next to it or neighborhood planning, and I found that when I did that, it really compressed the list. And then I also wanted to compliment Mr. Clark, because at the bottom, he did list some questions, and he said, you know, should anything be dropped or deferred? So, I know that, you know, we're saying there's a lot here, and there is, but, you know, there was, there were questions at the bottom that gave us an out. In other words, we weren't, you know, committed to do all of these things, so I just wanted to thank you for your thoroughness.
Yes.
I just wanted to make one point of clarification. As far as the sustainability-related development standards, as that was originally proposed, it's an ad hoc committee, not necessarily a planning commission duty. So, just a point of clarification
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
The only thing that I put on my list that I didn't talk to was, and it's not on any list, in fact, we don't talk about it at all, and it's water. Water catchment, water resources, how water affects all of us. I just think because that our water is managed by another source, that we don't feel that we have any say or any control or any input into how it operates, or, and I just think that us as a council and us as a city, we need to really think hard about what we're going to do to contribute to water and how it impacts and affects the valley this upcoming year.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Foster, anything? No?
Nothing.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, members of the public. We're adjourned.